All right, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming out tonight. Monday, December 6th, meeting of the Smyrna Mayor and Council. We have tonight with us Reverend Christian Salzillo with Life Church Smyrna Assembly of God at 4100 Kingsprings Road. If you'll come up, everybody please rise for the invocation and pledge.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I bring greetings from Pastor Shel Osmond, a friend of this city. It's our honor to serve you. Let's pray. Father, I want to begin this evening by giving thanks for our community and for our leaders. Lord, everything may not be right in this world, but I thank you that we have leaders who serve you with integrity, decency, and compassion. They've served through a hard and trying time, and, Lord God, I give you thanks for each one of them. Lord, I pray for them, I pray for their families, Lord, that you would keep them, protect them, keep them safe, even in this season. Now, Lord, for Christians around the world, which I identify as, Lord, we find ourselves in the middle of the Advent season. It's a season of waiting, a season of preparing, a season of anticipating, of believing, Lord, that what you promised, you will do. Lord, this community has known crisis, even recently, Lord, we have mourned, Lord, while this city has mourned. And, Lord God, Advent reminds us that there is a light that shines in the darkness. Lord, there is a voice that speaks comfort, even in the silence. Lord, there is a hope that in suffering and pain and loss and even crisis, Lord God, you can heal and you can redeem all things. So, Lord, for those walking through crisis tonight, I lift them up and I ask you, Lord God, to be near to them. Finally, tonight, Lord God, I offer you this prayer that many will be familiar with. Glory be to the Father, and to the Son, and to the Holy Spirit, as it was in the beginning, is now, and ever shall be, world without end. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend, for being with us tonight. Appreciate it. Item two is agenda changes. We don't have any. I do want to recognize, we have a candidate here. It's political season coming up, and somebody wants to, somebody we all know well, wants to announce his candidacy for State House District 40, I believe. I'll invite Doug Stoner up, former council member Doug Stoner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good to see some of my former colleagues I used to serve with. Yes, I'm here tonight to announce that I'm running for House District 40, the House District that Eric Allen is not running for again. He'll still continue to serve as our state rep until the end of his term next year, because he has announced for Lieutenant Governor. And so I've made the decision to run for House District 40 and came here tonight since, obviously, I've been involved with this community for now 30 years. In fact, I was talking with someone, I've been an appointed or an elected official or both simultaneously since 1991, and apparently, I don't feel I've gotten enough abuse, so I'm going to now offer myself back up to run again in the House. And so for me, it's a little bit about coming back home again, because I was originally elected to the House back in 2002. So this House District is similar, a lot of the same precincts I've served before and the same constituents. So those who know me and who have worked with me in the past know that what I'm concerned about when I'm in office and any position I take in public service is I want to work with folks, I want to solve problems. That's really all I want to do. I'm not interested in extreme partisanship. I'm there to get things done and solve problems. And anyone that knows me and has worked with me knows that's exactly what I'm going to do when I get back down to the House. So again, just wanted to come this evening and let everyone know, including my former colleagues, that I've declared for House District 40, and if everything goes hopefully well, I will be the state representative next year, serving my community again, my hometown. Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for being here. You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to. Item three is the mayoral report. Item A is the introduction and presentation of the Smyrna Youth Council program and its 2021-2022 members. And I know there's 10 of y'all, I believe. You've had two meetings, and this goes through the school year through May. I'll have Ashley talk a little bit about the program, and then Mayor Protem Gould can announce the class.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. So I am very excited to present to you our 2021-2022 Smyrna Youth Council members. This involves students in grades nine through 12, local Smyrna High School students, and they get to learn about local government and local government operations throughout the year while also proposing their own projects and initiatives. They are all very passionate and very intelligent. They're very interested in learning about Smyrna as well as serving the city of Smyrna as the city's youth voice. So I'm going to kind of put them on the spot. We haven't done any elections yet, so we don't have a Youth Council Mayor, but I wanted to see if anybody wanted to volunteer to say a couple words.
Don't everybody speak at once.
Don't all jump at once. I think Olivia Brown always has something to say. Or Haley Parker.
Hey, how you doing? My name's Eric. I'm nervous, but this is a good opportunity for me. I've never been a part of something like this before with a group of kids, other than like sports or anything, but something within the community that I've grown to love, because I'm from the inner city of Atlanta, and it's just a cool opportunity to be with these kids. Every one of them very smart, including myself. We have a great representative here, and I just can't wait to learn and experience. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking.
Thank you. So I'll open it up. Anybody else have anything to say? No, that's okay.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Haley Parker, and I just wanted to say that this is a really awesome opportunity that I didn't really, I don't know, I didn't really know was available to me for a while. And it's just really awesome seeing that there's so many kids my age that are also involved with the community, because I've grown up in Smyrna. I've seen Smyrna grow a lot, and it's just really nice to have like a student voice, because we've all come so closely. I've always felt like this is just a nice little community, and now it just feels even nicer and more comfortable now that I have kids at my age that are more interested. So yeah, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you both for speaking. So now I'll invite Councilman Tim Gould to come introduce you all and give you your oath of office. He is our Education Committee Chair.
So next year, we all line up on that side, so Louis and Susan and I are not blocked. First of all, thanks so much for doing this. This is really awesome. You know, you guys are the future leaders of our community, and I know you will represent the city well, represent your school well, and your families and whatnot. So thank you so much for making time to do this, because you all have other choices of things to do. So if I could, I'll just introduce each member. First, we have, if you just raise your hand if you don't, so folks know who you are. Sophie Ballsweet. Thank you. Olivia Brown. Rochelle Cece. Eric Giles. Noah Milan. Kate Mazur. Fiona McDermott. Rachel Odister. Haley Parker. And Justin Wu. Thank you so much, guys, for doing this. All right, we'll do our oath of office. If you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do affirm that I desire to be a member of the Smyrna Youth Council. That I will honestly and faithfully perform the duties assigned to me. All right. That I will abide by the rules which governs the Smyrna Youth Council members. And that I will be a good role model for all youth in Smyrna. Congratulations. Let me get a picture. All right. Mr. Mayor, you want to come down? Thanks, Ashley.
Thank you, and congratulations.
I'm glad you all are all participating. Thank you very much for your interest in everything we're doing in the city. I've got a couple of other things on my mayoral report. I just want to mention the menorah lighting that we had since we last met over at Bronner. That was very well attended. They did a giant gelp drop from one of our fire engines, and that was a bunch of gold coins dropped down to the kids, and they loved it. Just a really good, really good moment, so really appreciate that event. Also, the coming home from the holidays, for the holidays, and the tree lighting with Santa. I don't know how many came to that, but by all accounts, just a great event. It was a little different this year, because we've got the construction going on at the other side of the downtown, but having the tree up front and the, all the way to City Hall with lights and music and just a really good event. Our staff did a lot of work to prepare for that, not only putting up all the lights, but just the coordination and everything, and really, really appreciate all of their hard work. And we had college football, our last college football Saturday this last weekend. A lot of people came out for that to watch the championship games, and we'll be doing that again next year. That was a huge success. I think we did three of them this year, so. That concludes my mayoral report. Item four is land issues, zonings, and annexations. Item A, 2021-572, approval to replace an existing wall mural with a new mural on the eastern side of the restaurant, Land Lot 452, 0.14 acres, located at 1061 Concord Road by the applicant Ben's Crab. Any background, Mr. Bennett?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben's Crab has requested to replace an existing Cardinal mural on the eastern wall of the restaurant with a crab mural. The mural for the wall will be similar in size as the existing mural. There will be no commercial message within either mural. The City of Smyrna Sign Ordinance, Chapter 82, does not provide regulations for murals without a commercial message. Therefore, the restaurant is requesting authorization from Mayor and Council to formally approve the mural. Community Development has reviewed the request and recommends approval based on substantial compliance with the mural images submitted by Chris Veal on November 23rd, 2021.
Let me ask, is anybody from Ben's Crab here? I know I've spoken with the owner, but I've never met him. I wondered if he were here. All right, this is in Ward Three. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited about the new restaurant there in the former Wade's location, and I appreciate their willingness to work with the city and our folks and Community Development. So I think we've come up with a good compromise with that motion. Do pass.
Have a motion seconded by Mr. Welch. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. Thank you. Item five is privileged licenses. We have none. Item six is formal business. We have a couple of items on formal business this evening. The first two are change orders on Windy Hill. Item A, approval of change order to the Windy Hill project in the amount of $92,281.75 for concrete cap demo work done by Baldwin Paving Company, 1014 Ken Mill Drive, Marietta, Georgia, 30060, to be paid out of the 2016 SPOS fund. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. This change order is for the removal of a concrete ditch cap over a new sewer main and AT&amp;T duck bank. Baldwin's asphalt milling machine is not designed to mill out 10 inches of concrete, therefore, they'll have to have another contractor come in and take care of that, in the amount of $92,281.75.
Okay. I know we went over this as a body on Thursday. Is there anybody that has any comments or questions? All right, that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Lindley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion do pass is presented.
Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Gould. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 6-1 with Councilwoman Wilkinson voting in the negative. Item B, approval of change order to the Windy Hill project in the amount of $102,132.77 for undercutting and stabilization work done by Baldwin Paving Company, 1014 Ken Mill Drive, Marietta, Georgia, to be paid out of the 2016 SPOS fund. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This change order is due to soil failure after a proof roll test under the roadway between Wings 101 and Belmont Place. Recommendation is from Geo Hydro Engineers on how to make the roadway structural to prevent any future failures. The area in question is 600 feet long by 30 feet wide by 20 inches deep. It's recommendation is to bridge the roadway back to ensure the structural integrity.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Lindley.
Thank you. Motion do pass is presented.
Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item C, authorization to approve the purchase of a new Rubrik backup system from PC Solutions and Integration Incorporated, 4937 Southwest 75th Avenue, Miami, Florida, 33155, in the amount of $113,665.55, with an annual maintenance fee of $31,000, and authorize the mayor to sign and execute all related documents. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. IT has identified a problem with our backup systems, and they have run out of space due to the amount of data that has accumulated over the years. We're hoping that we could hold off on requesting a new backup system until next budget year, but IT is no longer able to back up the file server because of the storage space issue on the backup system. The current backup provider, ThinkGuard, is $50,976 per year currently. The minimum increase through ThinkGuard to fix our situation would make backup services in the amount of $61,524 per year going forward. Office 365 Backup, which is not yet implemented, is an additional $14,832 per year. The total cost to continue with ThinkGuard would be $76,356 per year. Due in favor of annual cost savings, the Rubrik Backup subscription and Azure Cloud Backup will be $31,000 per year after the initial $113,665.55 upfront charge. Furthermore, ThinkGuard currently does not back up all of our virtual servers due to, again, to the capacity. The Rubrik system has enough space to back up all of our virtual servers as well. Rubrik integrates with our HyperV infrastructure and APIs. This results in faster backups and restores. It's a recommendation of the IT Department and purchasing, the city approved the purchase of the new Rubrik backup system.
Long way of saying less money for more backup and more protection against hackers, right? Okay. Mr. Pickens.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll make the motion for 60 CON 2021-15.
Okay. Have a motion, seconded by Mr. Wagner. All those in favor, please vote. This is approved 7-0. Item D, authorization to release any interest that the city has in an undedicated Aberdeen Way, and authorize the mayor to sign a quitclaim deed to accomplish this. Mr. Bennett, the background, please.
Yes, sir. On April 1st, 1974, the Smyrna City Council voted to release any interest it had in an undedicated street proposed to be known as Aberdeen Way. This road had been platted but never built nor dedicated to the city. A deed releasing whatever interest the city had in the proposed roadway was prepared and signed by the mayor at the time. For some reason, this deed was never recorded in the real estate records, but the clerk's office located a copy of this deed in city files. For more than 40 years, a development has been situated on parts of Aberdeen Way. This has become a title problem, and the current owner has requested that the city release whatever interest it has in this old roadbed so that it can remedy the problem that this is causing. It's recommended by staff for the authorization to release any interest the city has in Aberdeen Way.
Any discussion? This is in Ward Two, Mr. Wagner.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Make a motion to approve item 60, as previously read.
We have a motion, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. And that's approved 7-0. Item seven is commercial building permits. We have none. Item eight is the consent agenda, and for the first time, we have a lot of reappointments to different boards and committees, and we've moved them to the consent agenda for the first time. I think that'll cut down on time, but it sure makes Joe have to read a lot more. But Joe, could you please read the consent agenda for council approval?
Yes, sir. Item eight, A MIN 2021-89, approval of the November 11th, 2021 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes. Item B, MIN 2021-85, approval of the November 15th, 2021 Pre-Council Meeting Minutes. Item C, MIN 2021-86, approval of the November 15th, 2021 Mayor and Council Meeting Minutes. Item D, 2021-573, approve the update of the time for the December 12th, 2021 Town Hall Meeting in City Hall Council Chambers from 2:00 PM to 3:30 PM. Item E, 2021-577, authorization to use council chambers on January 25th, 2021 from 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM for the Laurel Hill Town Home Association Meeting. Item F, 2021-578, authorization to use council chambers on January 30th, 2021 from 4:00 PM to 5:30 PM for the Concord Lake Village Homeowners Association Meeting. Item G, 2021-564, approval of the reappointment of the Downtown Development Authority, also known as the DDA, members as follows, Ron Davis, Kevin Draw, Jim Dulmer, Larry Freeman, Kimberly Gingemi, Diane Raisin, and Jason Saliba, with Mayor Derek Norton serving as chairman. This is a one-year term that will expire December 31st, 2022. Item H, 2021-557, approval of the reappointment of Ward One resident Nicholas Bergeron to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item I, 2021-560, approval of the reappointment of Ward One resident Charlie Phillips to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item J, 2021-553, approval of the reappointment of Ward Two resident Lisa Castleberry to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item K, 2021-561, approval of the reappointment of Ward Three resident Keith Bentley to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item L, 2021-554, approval of the reappointment of Ward Three resident Betty Williams to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item M, 2021-579, approval of the reappointment of Ward Four resident Carleen McNabb to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item N, 2021-580, approval of the reappointment of Ward Four resident Tom Sconzo to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item O, 2021-581, approval of the reappointment of Ward Four resident Earl Rice to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item P, 2021-558, approval of the reappointment of Ward Six resident Paula Weeks to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item Q, 2021-562, approval of the reappointment of Ward Six resident Michael Seagraves to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is also a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item R, 2021-555, approval of the reappointment of Ward Seven resident Tripti Gedgotti to the Keeps Smyrna Beautiful Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item S, 2021-559, approval of the reappointment of Ward Seven resident Jay Barrett Carter to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023. Item T, 2021-563, approval of the reappointment of Ward Seven resident Henrietta Ostrezaga to the Planning and Zoning Board. This is a two-year term that expires 12/31/2023.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. We have two small corrections on item E and F. Those would be January 25th, 2022, and January 30th, 2022. With those corrections, do I have a motion? I have a motion for Mr. Lindley to approve, seconded by Mr. Pickens. All those in favor, please vote. It's approved 7-0. There's a couple requests for you to read that again. Would you like to do that? Yeah, you're right, right. I just want to thank all the citizens who serve on all those boards and commissions. We really appreciate your time that you put into that and your service. The other note I had on item D on that agenda is the change of the time for the town hall meeting on the proposed brewery. That's this Sunday, December 12th. It'll be from 2:00 to 3:30 right here in City Hall. Item nine is Ward and Committee Reports. Item 9 is Ward and committee reports, and tonight I'll start with Mr. Glenn Pickens.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted a quick reminder, the Committee on Short-Term Rentals is having a town hall this Thursday night at 7:00 p.m. to go over our draft short-term rental ordinance that we've been working on. So it'll be in person at the, I think, in the HR room, but there'll also be a virtual option to join online. So that's all.
Mr. Wagner.
No report this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Lindley.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick and a huge thanks to city staff for the many hours and the huge success that the tree lighting ceremony, as well as the menorah lighting and the home for the holidays. So a lot of great events for our city over the last couple of days, and it did not just happen. So a huge thanks to them.
Mr. Welsh.
I'd just like to restate what Travis just said and also to thank every one of the citizens that came out. It was a huge success, everything that happened last week, and staff did a great job of it.
Ms. Wilkinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a couple of things. I had consulted with Scott Cochran a few minutes ago because I had intended to vote negative on Item 6B, Heather, and I hit the withdraw button, but it didn't actually work. And he just said to mention that when we went around, that that was my intention on Item 6B. Okay. Thank you. And then a couple of things I'd like to say. Thank you to the staff for all the hard work they did, too, for the Christmas tree lighting. It was wonderful, and there was a nice, large crowd that showed up for that. And then also, I'd like to also thank the staff for the work they did. Penny Messeri, the deputy city administrator, and the work that she did with the Rebuilding Together Atlanta, along with the staff from the police department that helped with the home in Ward 5 on Glendale Circle. It's a home of a veteran, and there's some, he's an elderly person with disabled, and this group got in and helped to clean up the property and prepare the area for some work that's being done with a grant that was received through the organization, Rebuilding Together Atlanta. And they're going to be doing rebuilding his deck on the back of his property and also putting some grab bars in the bathroom and some other needed things to his home to help him to be able to continue agent in place. And I want to thank all the staff for their hard work and the police recruits that came out Saturday morning to help with that. And also, I'd like to thank Councilman Tim Gould and Councilman Travis Lindley for coming out also on Saturday morning. It was a great group, and I can thank my husband, too. He came dowered. And anyway, it was a great group, and it was fun to help a citizen in Ward 5. Thank you.
Mr. Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, if I could just build on what Councilmember Wilkinson mentioned, the project on Glendale Circle was great. Part of it is you just see so many folks come out and help and volunteer, and good organization and a lot of support from city staff. And then really remarkable, you know, having the five police officers there, helping but just being part of the community, such an important part of our public safety, how they engage with their neighbors and our friends and relatives, and they do their part outside of work also. So big, big thanks to them. And then, of course, echo the comments by others about home for the holidays, wonderful setup in the downtown area, and thanks to staff for all the hard work. And then also to Rabbi Zaltzman for his work in bringing the Habad of Smyrna to our area with the Hanukkah tree lighting, Hanukkah memorial menorah lighting recently. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Wheaton.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a word of thanks to all those people that are serving in various roles in the community, the youth council we just acknowledged tonight, but also, as was mentioned, the various boards and committees and task forces. We have a lot of things going on, which is always a good thing, and it's always good to have residents be a part of those conversations as we consider various things around the city that have to come forward to this body to make a decision on. So definitely appreciate those individuals for taking time to volunteer for those activities.
Yeah. Now, Rob's spoken enough. Thank you, though. It's Penny. Scott, anything to say that doesn't include the SEC Championship? All right. Heather?
Not special.
All right. Jill? Okay. The only other thing I had is, and I just thought of it, we had a pretty long discussion on Thursday at our Committee of the Whole Meeting, which our work session, about the proposed brewery. And we had the representatives from City of Swanee, where they currently exist, come and talk about their experience with brewery, the things that they went through as they were considering this, and had a lot of questions answered. What kind of building and space are they proposing? How does the, how will Stillfire and the park work together? How many silos? What do they look like? How much space is for the tap room and social event space? And how much is actually for production? How much production do they anticipate? Will that ever grow? If so, how much? What about truck traffic? How about the fact that they don't have food and they have food trucks? You know, go talk about that. How does it compare with the Swanee facility? What concerns does Swanee have? Were they, were they addressed? If they were, how were they? Are there odors? What kind of lease or land sale did Swanee do with Stillfire? Why, you know, why isn't there a kitchen like a brew pub? Has there been an increase in DUIs? What's been the economic impact? Are they a good community partner and different things? So we took that and recorded it, and we put that on our city's social media. So I encourage everybody that can to attend on Sunday because I think if you have questions, you can get those questions answered there. But also, you can access that discussion in its entirety. I think it's like 45 minutes on our social media, our city Facebook page. And if you'd like a recording of that sent to you, just contact our offices, and we'd be glad to send that out to you. Again, that's 2:00 to 3:30 this Sunday. And with that, we have no show cause hearings, and we will go citizen input now. We have a few folks signed up to speak. We'll begin tonight with Ms. Shawn Martin, 2884 Anderson Circle. Now, you gotta hit the button there.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Shawn Martin, and I am speaking in relation to the proposed brewery. I want to offer a food for thought for mayor and council by a two-word phrase, words matter. I'd like to give you examples of how these two words have related to the brewery development. The first is done deal was mentioned at June 8 meeting. The second is letter of intent did not involve the council as a body and yet contains words related to what taxpayer dollars will cover. The traffic study accounted for 15,000 retail space and is no longer valid and needs to be revisited. Number four, the downtown redevelopment was approved at $2.5 million, grew to $6.5 million, and was reported in the paper as a $1 million savings. Number five, construction to start in spring of 2022 but actually started in October 2021. And number six, why would, why would you include someone who does not oppose, who is not in favor of the project on a planning committee? The building design looks great as a 3D fictional image of an industrial building meant to serve a certain population, most appropriate for another location. However, the fact remains, words matter. And in light of the repeated misuse of words, there are plenty of people who oppose this project. Some are afraid to come forward for fear of retaliation or exclusion from things they love in Smyrna. Words matter. When it was evident of the groundswell of people whose agency was removed at the mention of the two words done deal, that's when the cause of Smart Smyrna became much greater and our commitment galvanized. Just as you feel that you are working for the betterment of this city, so are we. So I ask that you understand that, given the stakes of Stillfire's $7 million investment and Smyrna's taxpayers' commitment of $11 million, you must be held to a higher standard. Accountability and transparency are not words of convenience but are values that you must consider with every word and commitment you make on behalf of this city. The pastor at the beginning of this meeting mentioned two words in his prayer and made an appeal that you lead with decency and integrity. Those two words, matter. I'd like to present the final petition numbers. They're not final. We're still collecting signatures that oppose this development. Before, it was just over 900. We're now approaching 1,200. Are you listening? And do those words matter? Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's pretty clear that we're listening. All of the, all of the concerns and questions, or at least many of them, all that we could think of, were addressed on Thursday and will be addressed on Sunday. Again, transparency is a, is a big word. I know we've asked for all of the names from those on that petition. It's been thrown out there a lot, how many people have signed this and all these comments, and we've asked for, we've asked for the names associated with those and have not gotten them. And, you know, we, we're very transparent here, and we, we would ask the same. All right. We'll go to the next one. Ms. Kathy Omets, 207 Countryside Place Southeast. Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sure. My name's Kathy Omets. Good evening. I wanted to start out by saying, and I think I'll start my timer, that, you know, I am aware of the good things done by, I've become aware, I'm new to this area, and I've become aware of the good things that people in this community have done. And in particular, the city attorney. You know, sometimes people don't mention the city attorney at all. He's just a person that performs functions, but people definitely speak well of Attorney Cochran. They go out of their way to say the good things. So that's really notable. And I, and Austin Wagner, who's my representative, has always been gracious and good about listening and speaking. And I've had a lot, I've heard a lot, what a wonderful steward Susan Wilkinson is. I've heard about the good things you've done, and by a different variety of people. You met with somebody who needed some help when, I think you were campaigning. You have, I brought up in Nextdoor at the last city meeting that I thought it was fantastic, the green energy for the boiler. It's awesome. I don't know if you're aware of that, but that was, it's not, the thing is, you mention about Nextdoor, you've mentioned at times, you gotta watch out, Nextdoor, the gossip, misinformation. But the funny thing is, on Nextdoor, the pushback and hatred is coming from people that, that are for your project. And the beat down and the ill-mannered, uncivilized disrespect when we try to engage real conversations, and it shouldn't be happening on Nextdoor, I agree. We really, Mayor Norton, we really should be able to have that discourse with you and council. This problem shouldn't have been worked out, but it's moved. It would appear that it was a deal done before the public even knew about it. And that's not fair to us. You represent, or the council represents, people, not a private company, and I am really wondering about that. That's discouraging to me. I've never been involved in local politics, so this is my first experience, and, you know, I'm really, I really, and my comment was saying that is what my big worry is, the process. And I'd like to be able to get that resolved so I can continue to love all the people I'm running across. Thank you.
You know, I'll say, I, we've had a lot of discourse with this project and a lot of discussion between the citizenry and the elected body. I can't speak for those who are talking online, saying things that they're saying. I don't know, I haven't seen it. But I do know that disrespect came directly from you when you said that this council ought to go to hell. And so, you know, I, I don't know.
That, that was...
No, no. I'm, I'm, your time is up, and that's my response, and we'll go on to the next, please. Ms. Jenny Barti.
Well, I have, I had a response to that, too, and that was that you were not addressing us. And for you to bring that up right now is a low shot.
You're talking about disrespect and how, and that's what I'm, and that doesn't get any lower than that.
That is citizen input. This is not mayor input.
But I have a chance to respond. I chair this meeting. Ms. Barti, you have three minutes.
She's coming to you. Okay. Hi, I'm Jenny Barti. I'm sorry to start it off in such a negative way, but I do have some things to say, and I also appreciate everything you all are doing. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight as a member of Smart Smyrna, a group that was formed soon after the short-sighted visit for revamping our beautiful downtown was made known. I say made known, but that is an exaggeration. There was no mention of it to be found on the city's website. Notices were not posted anywhere but on the city's Facebook page, from my understanding. Many residents don't use social media, and this seems to be a poor way to notify citizens of major city initiatives. When I heard what was up, it was almost too late. As you may have heard, stated many times, we feel it was a rushed vote with council members perhaps not truly understanding what was being voted on. Over these last six months, the community has gradually begun to learn more, but never enough. We don't feel that information has been forthcoming for the plans, and we do not feel the public is being well-represented and well-served. Now, I speak not as a member of the group but on a personal level. Mr. Mayor, I gave you the benefit of the doubt when you came into office, perhaps foolishly. The candidate I supported lost the vote in a, in the runoff very narrowly, as you recall. But I do wonder if you remember the first time we met. It was before a festival in downtown Smyrna in 2019 leading up to the election. I was surprised to see you and your family had a booth front and center right by City Hall to promote your bid for mayor. The odd thing is, your opponent was told that he could not get a booth, that there was no politics at the festival. What I see now taking place is a continuation of you doing things that are questionable and not listening to the public. Along with many of my friends and neighbors, I continue to hold out hope that many of you, that those of you on the council will truly listen to the people you represent. The vast majority of residents I have spoken with have not been in support of the redevelopment, and even more are opposed to the sale of our land to the brewery, aka beer factory to be built. Maybe spirits, too. I sure hope the spirit moves you to ponder the many suggestions made of better uses for that space and to find another spot in our city for Stillfire, such as South Cobb Drive. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, my name is Monsera Knowlton. I live at 1367 Poplar Point, Smyrna. I lived in Smyrna for 28 years. This is the longest I lived anywhere. And I live two miles from downtown. My heart is downtown. A lot of my life is spent downtown. The beer factory is not an issue about a business who wants to open shop in Smyrna. The apply process has been different. It's not to see if, it's not to see if the business fits in the city's best interests. This has been about redesigning the entire downtown to place this beer factory in it. I am not opposed to a business like that to be, to be open in another location in Smyrna. The chosen location next to the community center, it's not a good choice for the citizens of Smyrna. Their other location in Swanee appears to suit the town's needs for entertainment. Their other location in Swanee appears to suit the town's needs for entertainment. The situation is not the same here. Swanee is a town farther away with 20,000 people. It is a third of the population of Smyrna. Their sources of entertainment are far, farther away. Smyrna is closer to Atlanta and just a few miles from the Battery, the Campbell Mall, the West Village, Riverside. In addition, the quad will be open soon near downtown Smyrna. We are also very close to Marietta and Sandy Springs, which have also a lot to offer for entertainment. Stillfire has lately been talking about reducing the size of the business. Why not change the location? There is, there are two edges and lots to Atlanta Road between the Fire Department and the Police Department. That would be a better location. The two lots are nearly an acre and would have better access to Atlanta Road. Give this location a consideration. It would meet approval of residents that now oppose the present chosen location. Please reconsider. The future of our town is at stake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will say, this has been termed an industrial beer factory, and nothing could be further from the truth. We were discussing it on Thursday, that the amount of space actual for production is very small, and the big, the big spaces for events. They talked about the fact that there was a lot of folks, some of their biggest supporters don't even drink. In the last week or two, they've had kids' birthday parties, end-of-year team parties, you know, all ages, all, it's just very, it's just very different from what is being, being represented. I'm the chair of this meeting, and I can, I can also say stuff. Thank you. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Your time is up, Ms. Barti.
It's appropriate. I think your time is up.
Well, unfortunately, you don't get to make that call. Mr. Larry Mazoni, 2646 Atlanta Road.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. My name is Larry Mazoni. I'm an employee, a 33-year employee with the Smyrna Police Department. I'm here tonight, Mayor, to ask if I can have a private meeting with you in reference to a human resource issue that I want to resolve.
Absolutely. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yep, just call, we'll get it set up whenever you want.
Thank you.
All right? Thank you for being here. Ms. Pat Burns didn't make it for the sign-up sheet, but she sent a note in that she'd like to speak. So, come on up, Ms. Burns.
Thank you. My name is Pat Burns. I live at 10 Concord Road Southwest. I am a Smyrna homeowner and a stakeholder. It appears there are shenanigans and shadiness brewing in Smyrna between the city and still fire. Suddenly, this afternoon, the city posted a YouTube video, its first-ever video of the community of the whole meeting. The first-ever video of the community of the whole meeting. This might be legal, but as the invocation begged for integrity, did this show integrity? Is this transparency? Was it ethical? And does it build trust? It does not build trust between you and the residents. Would you take this action at your work? Would you take such action in your family? We are your work. We are your family. This type of shenanigans and shadiness has no place in our city.
That is a public meeting on Thursdays that is, minutes are posted every time. This is a major issue, as is clear by the folks who have shown up to all of the meetings about this. There are no shade, there's no shadiness or shenanigans. We put that recording out there because we wanted folks to be able to have answers to their questions, and that's the definition of transparency. So, thank you for your comments. Cheryl Hodgins, 1480 Memory Lane, 30080.
Oh, this is like right different. I am going to go to the brewery, where we're a divided house, like my husband is yes, I'm no, yada, yada, yada. But thank you for putting that, the video on, because I can watch that and at least be a little informed. That's not why I'm standing here. You guys already said it. I just want to say a shout-out to the organization that went to not just the tree lighting, but the craft fair, there were two of them, and the Smyrna Market that's been there. And I know everyone involved, but every time I went down there, with all due respect, I teach yoga at the Wolf Center, but that's not why I'm saying her name, but with, you know, Jody Mills, every time, she was there. People were saying Jody this, Jody that. So, I know everybody was involved, but I think Jody Mills kind of did a little more of extra, but it was amazing. I mean, I have organized small things like that back when I was younger, in my 30s. It's humongous to get everybody on the same page, and she brought so many local vendors together in everything she did. It was amazing. I mean, I just am very proud of the people that did all that and to say I live in Smyrna. So, thank you. So, I'll see you on Sunday.
Thank you for your comments.
Be as friendly. No, I'm only kidding.
Listen, that's fine. Jody did a great job, and so did her husband. He was the one, I don't know if y'all saw, but, well, how could you not? That drone that was flying around, you know, like right here, he was in charge of doing that. So, we got a lot of great images from that, and they did a great job. That's all that we have signed up for citizen input. If there's no other business to be brought for this body, we are adjourned at 7:53. Thank you all very much.